All right, good afternoon. We will call this meeting today at, excuse me, let me start over. Look at this meeting called to order at 3:01 PM. So this is the special meeting of the Board of Education of Pooter School District. It is May 26, 2020. And we are once again holding an electronic special board meeting. So just one more time, I want to give everybody the usual tips. Community members are non-participants, so they're, they will be always muted. There will be no community comments at this meeting. For the rest of us, when you're not speaking, please do remember to mute your phone, your speaker, your microphone. And as I think everybody's been really good, but just raise your hands and wave it at me and I'll call on you. And just give the microphone a second to get going before you speak so that you could be heard. So with that, to launch this meeting, Jill, I see you're there. If you wouldn't mind doing a roll call and making sure we know who's on in the meeting.
DJ Anderson?
He's here.
Nate Donovan, are you on? Kristen Draper?
Kristen Draper is here.
Kristoff Fev? Naomi Johnson?
Naomi Johnson is here.
Rob Pedersen?
Rob Pedersen here.
Carolyn Reed?
Carolyn Reed here.
Sandra Smizer?
Sandra Smizer is here.
Autumn Aspen?
Autumn is here.
Matt Bryant?
Matt Bryant is here.
Todd Lambert?
Todd Lambert is here.
Dave Montoya?
Dave Montoya is here.
Scott Nielsen?
Scott Nielsen here.
Madeline Noblet? Dustin Reinsma?
Dustin is here.
And Vicki? Vicki's here. Nate Donovan, are you there? Okay, that's roll.
Okay, thank you very much, Jill. And I, I, I'm assuming Nate will show up and he'll, you know, we'll flag him in. Lauren will probably let him in when he does that. So, okay, and bear with me. Before launching the meeting, I did want to just make a few comments and I, I wrote them out. So I know it's a little unusual, but I, I wanted to say this before we begin going. So I just want to take a few minutes and say that since we closed the schools and our community went into this emergency social distancing protocol and we've had to run our meetings online, one of the things we have not done is do the pledge of allegiance. I would say it may not be unusual for some public, members of the public to wonder why we even bother to stop our meetings and do that. But I think it is precisely at times like these that we may want to remember why we take these small formal steps. I believe it is to help us focus on the task at hand, to remind us that we are all part of one unified nation, working together to solve problems and to create an ever better community around ourselves. And while we're not saying the pledge of allegiance this evening, I did want to say a few, a few things. Here goes. Today, we hold our first meeting after finally closing out what proved to be a difficult school year. Today, we will continue contemplating painful budget cuts to our system just because we so much want to do what is right for our students and our families and our staff. I've been beyond impressed with the heart and soul of this organization, with the families and students working under truly uncomfortable conditions to continue the work of learning, with our many educators never giving up while continuing to care for and take charge of our students, the classified employees, many of whom have had to deal with doing new and different tasks, the administration taking the system through all of this and working long hours to coordinate the present and plan for the future. And finally, for the school board that has taken it upon ourselves to put in the extra painful work of deciding how to use our values and our judgment to make the toughest decisions to balance out what we want, what we need, and to shoot for the very best for all our students in the system. I have spoken to all the board members many multiple times these past weeks and many of the staff as well. It is absolutely clear to me that we are all working towards the same vision and mission. Let's remember that this afternoon as we work our way through challenging and difficult decisions. Ask tough questions and listen to the answers. Be vigorous and be polite in our discourse. Stand by your convictions and listen to the opinions of others with an open mind. Above all, vote your conscience. Do it with confidence and trust that we will support you in doing so. I ask that everyone involved and everyone listening appreciate the positive intentions and the hard work that is being put into this. Once decisions are made, let's stand together and drive to the best possible outcomes. So thank you for bearing with me with that. I'm going to move us into the agenda. So item 2.0 is approval of the agenda. Board members, are there any, is there anybody who would like to change the agenda at this point? Okay, seeing none, we'll push forward and take ourselves into just a few moments for board discussions. So that's item 3.0 on the agenda. And I'm just going to open it up to anybody who'd like to comment at this point. Bear in mind, that can be committee reports, that can be anything that's on your mind or agenda for future meetings.
Thank you, this is Naomi. I attended the Fuyana Committee Meeting last week, or two weeks ago, I guess, on the 14th. They were planning for students to pick up their materials and I hear that that went very well from their early childhood classrooms. We are awaiting plans for the fall at the next school board meeting on June 9th. Everyone is awaiting information on that. Classroom numbers are still really hard. Normally, the classrooms are, I think, at 14 students to one adult, but obviously now there is the additional layer of the social distancing requirements and what that means for our littlest learners is still yet to be determined, particularly when it has to do with physical contact. It's really hard to tell a three-year-old that you cannot hug them. So they're waiting to hear information about that. Federal grant money looks really solid. They're, they're confident that all of the federal grant money that they have and that they've applied for will continue to be funded. There are currently no planned cuts to head start or early head start at the federal level, which is great news for our littlest learners. There was approximately a half a million dollars available for virus relief funds that Carolyn Martin applied for. That, those funds cannot be used for salaries. So they're looking at buying iPads perhaps preloaded with educational apps as well as MiFi hotspots to help support our students who do not have Wi-Fi access. All of the communication between parents and teachers is being tracked in a way to assist with the attendance requirements, although they stopped doing attendance. They've actually found that their home visits are increasing because it's a lot easier to schedule a phone call than it is a physical meeting in person. So they've, they've been able to get all of those home visits taken care of. CPT funds look good. They're going to be requesting an additional 32 slots for pre-K and requesting the ability to convert 34 of those slots to be full-day pre-K slots. We know that that was a need for the community. Again, a lot of this is hinging on what happens with social distancing and, you know, things happening at the state level. We did have a conversion of some of our classrooms due to the Basecamp shift over. Basecamp was providing early childhood support for three classrooms. And my understanding is that there is currently discussion with Alphabet to see if they would pick those up. It is a separate RFP process than the before and after-school RFP, and so they are working on that as well. Overall, really positive, looking forward to the fall and just waiting on information from our health professionals as to how best to support these tiny little learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. And before moving on, I see Nate Donovan's name on the screen. I don't see him, but I'm assuming that's a particular difficulty. So welcome, Nate. Any, any other board members want to jump?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the legislative subcommittee. We, the letters that we had sent out to our state legislators, they're diving back in at the Capitol as we speak. We did hear back from quite a few of them. One of the things that we had asked for was trying to get them to refer Initiative 271, Fair Tax Colorado. It's not sounding very positive, mostly because they don't, they feel like the time will get eaten up if they try to get a new bill in and they only have so much time. So of the, of the legislators that we, that we sent to, we did, like I said, we heard back from our local reps, Arnt and Kip, and a few others that were on JBC. We fortunately did not hear back from any of the Republican members, which was kind of discouraging. But we did also post a petition on Facebook individually. We've been sharing that and there's been, I believe, 300, it was like 69 that have signed up for it, which was asking for our federal representatives to stand up and ask for public education funding and, and help some guidance on it. This morning, I actually even heard a interview from some other states on, on the radio talking about this same problem. And I think the more states that we get on board asking for it, hopefully we can get an answer that the federal government will help stand up and, and help backfill some of the problems that public education is going to be in. I think that's all I have about that. Thanks.
Just to follow up with that, question on the CARES Act money that we have received? If at some point we could go ahead and see how much we've received, what has been spent already? And I know that their state is still working on guidelines for us and how, where, why, when to spend this money. So if we ever get any of those guidelines, the last webinar that I attended from CASB, they still, so they were still working on that. So, but if you were to hear about that, if you could send those along, that would be fantastic as well. So, thank you.
I was just told by Tessa that Nate is, has audio but not videos. I don't see him on, showing up on the screen, but apparently he is able to hear us. I'm not sure, assuming he can also speak, so. Nate, you'll have to chime in or something, but maybe tell Jill or something when you, you want to speak. I'm not sure how we'll do that, so we'll figure it out. Any other board members want to jump in? And remind you, if you have topics on your mind, like Kristen's discussing, you know, any agenda subjects that you want to call out, that'd be a good time to bring it up for us. Okay. Right. I see nobody else wanting to speak. We'll just move straight through. It is a busy, a busy agenda this evening, so that's all good. Next up is the consent agenda. I'd take a, well, would anybody like to pull anything from consent?
Hi, this is Naomi and I would like to pull the 4.6 Award for Athletic Turf.
Very good. I was anticipating that. So we'll remove 4.6 from the consent agenda. And I was going to move it all the way down to action item 6.5, all the way at the end of the action items. So that's the award forbid for the athletic turf replacement project at Fort Collins High School and Pooter High School are not on the consent. Would anybody else like to pull anything from consent this evening? I guess they could say this afternoon, sorry. Okay, seeing none, I'd take a motion for the consent.
I move that the board approve and adopt the rest of the recommended actions, or the recommended actions for the rest of the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
DJ Anderson?
DJ votes aye.
Nate Donovan, are you there? Kristen Draper?
Kristen Draper votes aye.
Kristoff Fev? Naomi Johnson?
Johnson votes aye.
Rob Pedersen?
Rob Pedersen votes aye.
Carolyn Reed? Carolyn Reed? Carolyn, I can see you, but I can't hear you.
Screen just blanked out. Yes, aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, and just for clarity, Phil or Lauren?
I got a text from Nate, says, hi all, I'm pretty sure my Wi-Fi here at the place where he is will be inadequate, I'll keep trying, have a great meeting.
Okay, all right, so we'll proceed, assuming we don't have Nate until we hear otherwise at this point. Okay, fair enough. Okay, thank you, that gets us to the informational items. So that's item 5.0. And first up on the informational items is item 5.1, a report, the annual report from the district advisory board. And so Sandra is going to introduce this, but I might just jump in and welcome Julie Wenzel, which I, I always have a great pleasure working with the DAB and it's been really wonderful getting to know Julie and seeing how she runs that meeting.
Thank you, I was just going to say similar comments. And also wanted to thank Scott and Todd for all the investment of time they have spent with these amazing parents. It's just been such a productive year and we're excited to hear your end of year report.
Julie is on, she needs to unmute and turn on her camera and she'll be ready to go.
Can you hear and see me yet?
We can hear you, we can't see you yet.
Oh, you can't see me, okay. And my camera says it's on.
Is there a start sharing on your image somewhere?
There you go. Okay, okay. Hi, everyone. Hello, thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Directors and PSD Leadership. It's been an honor to be Chair of District Advisory Board this year. And virtually beside me is Chair-elect Jessica Zamora. And as you know, and are probably very familiar with, DAB is a unique group. We are representatives from schools across the whole district and we consider ourselves a bridge between families and PSD leadership. Next slide, please. Our goals this year were to try best to align our DAB conversations with the board's objectives. And we did talk to Kristoff a number of times throughout the year, trying to make sure we were staying on track there. We dived deeply into social, emotional learning and mental health to provide recommendations to the board. And we did work to get something in your February packet for your work session. And also new this year is we had homework assignments for representatives that would prompt conversations between respective schools, principals, counselors, and community groups. Next slide, please. This is a very simplified slide showing our agenda items for the year. So September, we talked a little bit about the Mill Levy Override. I want to mention that October through January, we had work sessions, table discussions. This is when we were really diving into SEL, card storming, really working and digging into SEL so we could provide that recommendation to you. In addition, in October, we had a moderated panel with board candidates. Thank you for coming to that. And what was super cool about that is we had a PSD think tank student as our moderator. So that was really delightful this year. November, we talked about the connectedness survey. December, we had an SEL and Health Expert Panel and lots of Q and A with them. In January, it was kind of nice. We kicked off the year with promising practices and different promising practices that were happening at some of our schools gave us a boost. Let's talk about that. In February, our meeting was canceled due to weather. However, now having had two virtual meetings in the future, we can probably have virtual meetings versus having to cancel weather for weather. In March, we broke up into groups and watched different TED Talks and then shared out about them. We were hoping to kind of plant new seeds for topics for next year to discuss for DAB. And then April and May were both virtual meetings. We got a lot of Q and A time with Todd and Scott, a lot of talking about current events, a lot of updates from PSD. So that is the agenda simplified. But I did provide a supplementary document that if you wanted to find the links and the minutes and details, you can do that. Next slide, please. So some success is we did examine social, emotional learning and mental health for a big part of the year. We had very thoughtful conversations with school board candidates, counselors, therapists, social workers, health educators, many of whom are listed here on our call, and the Director of Research and Evaluation. We aim to provide timely communication to the board and got you that letter for your work session. We've also conducted a survey among our representatives and I've included the link for the responses to the survey in my supplemental materials, but it was a survey on the virtual learning experience. And I'm happy to answer questions about that too. But that link to the survey data from our reps is in that supplemental document. And then another success is we really have a nice time with Kristoff and Todd and Scott and our liaisons to DAB. Next slide, please. Potential future topics. We've surveyed our group to consider what topics for next year's DAB efforts. And also will certainly be interested in working on topics that help you through your puzzles and needs. But some of the ones that have come up are cultural equity, including diversity, inclusion, special needs, the digital divide, and assessing outreach like the food drives and community support coming through schools. Distraction-free learning continues to be really important to our reps and internet safety now that we're, have been using the internet more and relying, relying on virtual learning. Next slide, please. Lastly, just want to say super grateful for our exec team. They are listed here, Jessica Zamora, Rachel Olson, Lonnie Williams, KJ Hosman, Brady Martucci, Chris Roy, and certainly our liaisons. We're very, very grateful for you. And that concludes the slides, but I would be very happy to hear any questions from you, concerns from you, seeds you want to plant for next year.
Yeah, Julie, thank you so much. One of the things that I would love to see the DAB dive into is the cultural equity. I, I do think that especially as we are doing this remote learning, that, that equity, we're seeing the haves versus the have-nots even more. And I think we need to look at all different ways that we can close those gaps. You know, doing a great job of it right now with the, getting those Wi-Fi trucks out there and that kind of thing, but there's a lot more that we could dive into. And so I really appreciate you putting that at the top of the list. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd just like to take a quick moment to second that and love to see what you guys could get out of, out of the community to see what is bubbling up for them and, and what they see at their individual sites. So I, I think that's a great list you guys have come up with and can't wait to see what you come up with.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you. And continue to use us and, you know, we're happy to deliberate. We're happy to be surveyed. We're happy to do focus groups. So please feel free to reach out to DAB. We're here for you.
Fantastic. Will do. And Jessica, thank you as well. And we look forward to next group meeting as well. Okay, move us right along, so.
Thank you. Well, we have Ruben Chacon, you see him, you have appeared, Ruben. And also Melanie Vobli-Morris, are you around, Melanie? They will be joining us for this conversation. I think it's particularly interesting that for the last several, there you are, Melanie. For the last several years, we've had mental health and social, emotional issues as a forefront of what we've been trying to work on. And then given the circumstance we've been in and the changes that happened so unexpectedly this year and what we, the unknowns about next year, you, you and your teams, Melanie and Ruben, have just come to the forefront again. So we're looking forward to this conversation about what this has been like for kids and for families, what your efforts have been and, and what you're thinking about for the future. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to start.
I'd like to start, Melanie. Do you want to say anything before I get started? No? So I'm going to go ahead and get started. First, I want to take the time to thank you, members of the Board, Dr. Schmeizer, for the opportunity to share Student Services' work. It has been a very interesting time. And our work teams have been very busy during this virtual learning component. And so with that, I want to take the time to share what Student Services does, who are all the members of the team, and then also a little bit about what we anticipate that we will be seeing and what we are seeing currently during this quarantine time. And then also some of the ongoing work that different members of the team have been doing. So with that, I'll get started on the presentation. And there's an opportunity for questions throughout if you'd like. So first off, what does Student Services Department do? We support many different aspects of mental health and student wellness. We support 504s, Title IX, gender plans, service animals. We do a lot with guidance and compliance around those areas. We have the K-12 Counseling Corporation, the Mental Health Team Corporation, our Sexual Assault Resource Team, our Student Safety Team, which is threat assessments, suicide assessments, student wellness, our General Education Behavior Specialist Team, our school nurses, and our educational audiologists. So there's quite a variety of things that we do serve. All of them is for the focus around the physical and mental wellness of students in our district. Next slide, please. As a result of this current COVID-19 impact in our community, we're observing a few different components of what students are facing as well as parents. We're seeing increased anxiety from our students, depression, feelings of isolation and loneliness, lack of motivation, fear about COVID. There's extreme stress over financial and academic concerns from parents and students, and domestic and child abuse. And so it's been trying to serve students and families, help them through some of those issues that they're running into as well as our staff with the extreme of COVID-19. Next slide, please. One of the things we're anticipating as our students return to school, whatever they might, that might look like in the fall. We know that we understand that students will have to have a strong, they'll have a strong disconnection from their peers and staff. We're looking at possibly six, seven months being from a structured classroom environment. And so there's going to be some of that disconnection. And reestablishing connections is going to be important to reestablishing that safety, that predictability, and that routine. And then we also are really hearing that those relationships with school staff is going to be important before we can really begin some of that learning again. I think it's important not to jump into, okay, here's where we're at in Algebra II, but more how have you been, you know, is there anything you need? And then getting into that learning component as we know students feel supported and reconnected to the building. So that's part of a group that Melanie's working on in the education group on suggestions and how we reintroduce students to the, to the school system. So focusing on different aspects of different groups. We have the Mental Health Team and how they've been supporting the new normal. And again, all of the slides following this do not do true justice to all the work that our staff members do. You know, whether it's our counselors, whether it's our mental health team, our student safety team. This is just a brief summary of that work. We would have a five-hour presentation if we actually tried to get to that level of detail. But this is just a general overview. So again, we're providing services on individual, ongoing meetings. And we meet with students in groups at all levels. They're doing crisis response to students who are at risk of suicidal ideation or other emergencies as they come up, helping families and students get directed to community resources that are open and available. And then also helping to meet and connect parents with community resources and other services as needed. So a lot of work happens at the back end. A lot of it's built off that personal relationship that they have with students. And then also as they are directed from school-level staff, teachers who are encountering issues in the normal classroom, they're getting referred over to the mental health team and then picking up support that way. Next, please. Our behavior intervention coaches, again, they're doing work as well. You wouldn't think that you would need as much behavior intervention from a remote learning classroom. But I think, you know, parents are struggling with how do we keep students engaged? How do we do some of the things that you as teachers are asked to do on a regular basis? And so there has been ongoing remote consultation and collaboration with staff to support students that might have challenging behavior in this time. There has been collaboration with staff to create behavior and intervention and safety plans, really trying to work with parents as well around what can they do to keep students engaged, offering suggestions around students that are refusing to do work and how can we kind of pull them back into being engaged in the classroom. And then they're, as they're doing that, they're also building some training that would happen in the fall around really providing a systematic approach to student behaviors and other pieces. We, again, expect to see increased student behaviors, both from being in a unregulated setting like a school, from some of the trauma they may have impacted, impacted the families over this time. And so again, it's also helping to coach parents and teachers as we come back to school around what can we do to really support you and get that classroom flowing again. Next, please. And then we have our Sexual Assault Resource Team. Again, that is really one person, but she supports our school assault resource team, our sexual assault resource team, excuse me. That team actually trains high school peers and middle school peers to go out and do more training. This year, they were actually able to work with, interact with 4,000 different students around what are some of those safe boundaries? How do we support you if you are a victim of sexual assault or harassment? We also work with students with intellectual development disabilities to talk about that safe and appropriate because oftentimes students can be fall victim to predatory behaviors if they're not equipped with that. And so it's helping them and equip them. And then our individual who does the sexual assault research team also helps with our Title IX policies and guidance with schools as well as if there's a question from the school around proper process and procedure, that person also assists with that process. Next, please. Student Wellness is our student wellness coordinator. This individual actually works with, Alexa Garrett, I'm sorry, I should be using their names, goes out, works with all the schools primarily. It's been high school, and we're trying to filter that down to the middle and elementary schools as well. But it's around the student wellness committees, forming those wellness committees, working with the wellness committee, being the liaison with the District Wellness Committee. Again, trying to integrate different practices. We have work that's happened with our Mental Health Education Connection Specialist, who is Kelly Glick. And so trying to pass some of that work on to our student wellness committees and really help support overall around the comprehensive health plan and our, and our community partners that we work with. And then K-12 counseling, last but not least. They support, obviously, the education, prevention, intervention, referral students and their families. They do a lot of social, emotional practicing that's going on in the building, depending on the levels as well. They collaborate with all members of our student supports in terms of social workers, school psychologists, behavior specialists, and our mental health team. And then again, they also help make appropriate referrals to community service providers. One of the things with their K-12 counselors that, you know, the summary doesn't do justice to is also, you know, they also are doing academic support. They're doing the college prep components. They're getting them ready in terms of making sure they're signed up for college visits. There's a lot that goes into it that, again, this summary doesn't mean. And every level of counseling has a different component of that work that they do, whether it's ICAP plans and how those carry forward from year to year. But this, this slide itself doesn't encapsulate all the work that a counselor does in K-12. So it is a brief overview of that work. And then the last slide, if you would please. With the big question around budgets, just want to give you an overview of what is happening with their counseling in the district right now. Currently, we have 104 licensed counselors in PSD. You know, we know that there are 22 counselors that have been partially or fully funded by CDE. We're all still waiting for that word from CDE as to what is happening with budget, grants, and those components. Last week, I was hearing that they were close to having some guidance around that, but I have yet to see that. So we're hoping for that guidance soon. With that, we've been trying to gather information around which counselors have been impacted by those grants, whether it's partially or fully funded. And so we're gathering that information as well to provide a clear picture to decision-makers in the district as well. And then use of mill levy override funds. You know, as Ms. Wenzel had talked about with the DAB, you know, I remember being a part of that panel. You know, we've taken many different inputs around that 4A funds. There has been the ability to really bring that full-time support to elementary level as a result of that 4A. With 4A, we are also, I believe, two school psychologists were being, or psychologists were being hired through Integrative Services. And then that additional support at secondary schools is really to beef up and support the current mental health team as well as add resources so that we can fully and properly support our heater system as we move forward. So that is all that I have in my presentation. This last slide right here is something that our team has been working on. It's an internal resource page for staff so that they can quickly and easily get to those different supporting documents that we have. You know, like, I'm sure all of you have experienced over this time, it's sometimes easier to say, oh, I think I have that file. And you're looking for it, or where is it located? And sometimes it's looking out in different places. And so we're trying to facilitate that conversation as much as possible. So those areas that we support, we want it to be a one-stop shop for staff. And again, I think that's going to benefit us no matter what that learning model looks like for the fall. But it will benefit us to all of our staff and our community as we move some of those resources to more of a forward-facing resource for parents to access, staff to access, and students to access. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those.
So I have two questions. You want me to do one at a time?
I'll start with DJ and then Rob and then Naomi. Who's that?
So you mentioned working with your, with the community partners. And so I was wondering if there's something planned or in effect for like this summer with, again, like you mentioned, it could be six months for the kids are back and, and the concern that, you know, we're not seeing those kids, if we're, if we're missing out on opportunities that these kids need to be taken care of. So I was wondering if there's some kind of work going on during the summertime with those community partners?
You know, right now, there's a number of different groups that I am part of. So the Limer County Interoperations Group does a lot with foster, DHS, other components in the community around how do we support our students? I know Mal's involved in community-level meetings as well. The Community Resource Guide just came out from, I forget which partner agency that comes from. And so everyone, as we've sat through our different meetings that are community-level meetings, has really been about how do we find and connect our students? And how do we not overlap our work, but really use each other to support? And so much of that work has been taking place. The conversation is there. You know, I think everyone's role in that process is a little bit different in terms of if we're looking to reengage students, then, you know, obviously that might fall more to the district. But we also have partnerships with Department of Human Resources through the Limer County Interagency Group that is focused around finding and caring for those students, whether they're foster or facing neglect or other components. There is a wide variety of partners who are participating in that group. And so I think right now, it's been a lot of the conversation and people trying to catch up. And right now, it's more of that planning and beginning of that planning for how do we really look for and make sure we can engage students as the fall approaches.
Ruben, if I can jump in really quick, we did a lot of, we always do a lot of work ahead this time of year. Actually, April, we're thinking about what happens over the summer. This year, of course, is particularly unique. We've worked really hard with our community partners, many of those who Ruben mentioned, certainly some at Stone, so that our kids are connected with ongoing telehealth, hopefully soon to be a little more in-person therapies over the summer. So got super creative in planning for that this summer.
Are you guys available for them to contact you to get information or to share information?
All the mental health team and the student safety team are off contract. I remain on call for emergencies and crises. But some have a little bit of an extended contract, not much. But then we've worked really hard to let our families know that we won't be available over the summer. I mean, that's just as important. I don't want a student trying to reach out to a mental health specialist and then having them not be there. So we've worked more with parents too, to let them know when availability ends and when we pick up again in August.
And the same goes for counselors. They, you know, they have an extended contract for extra days, but that's a lot for registration in the year, the transcript. And so typically, they're, they're not on staff. I do work all year round, so I am still available for contact. And then, you know, I know Mal's always gracious and Teresa as well with giving that time if we need to connect the student resources through that.
Yeah, so I, you talked about how important it is to establish contact or connection really again in the fall. And I guess the question I have is assuming that some number of kids from 10% to 100% are online as opposed to in a building. And particularly for elementary school kids who have no, most of whom have no knowledge of or any previous contact with the teacher that they're going to be with in that year, right? Because, I mean, that's often true for high school students too, but they sort of expect that, elementary kids sort of. So what, do we have plans in place? Or are we going to be putting plans in place specifically to deal with that eventuality? To deal with that, to train the teachers really about how to establish connection through a screen effectively with kids? They don't have any prior connection to that.
Yeah, and there are committees that are running currently that are developing those plans and looking at those different components of, one, what is it that our schools encountered? What did our parents and students encounter? And what is our staff, what have they encountered through this process? And so, you know, there's a lot of lessons learned and there's a lot of that learning that's happening, that has happened, I should say. And so there are committees that are planning on how can we better support our families and our students? How we make those connections? What resources do we devote to those components? I know Melanie, again, has been part of, you know, served as a mental health component of that. But it's a bigger system conversation in terms of, I think Scott and Todd and others have led that conversation. There are subgroups along with district leadership principals. And then there is that parent survey that went out around gauging some of those frustrations or, you know, things that are lessons learned or the things that worked well in this process. And so that has been more of a system issue. And we have a small part in that conversation around, you know, understanding that mental health and student support component as well as that counseling component. But that is something that is occurring. And I think Todd or Scott might be able to better speak to some of the specifics or a timeline for that.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just point out that maybe what's obvious, and that is that this year, when the kids went out, they had already established a relationship with, for the most part, with the teachers that they then had to follow up with online. Next year, that's not going to be the case. So while there are important things to learn, techniques and other things, best practices from what happened this, this spring. So while there are important things to learn, techniques and other things, best practices from what happened this, this uh, spring, I'm just saying that it strikes me as a non-professional, but nevertheless, it strikes me that in the fall, there'll be additional or unique challenges as compared to what happened this spring. And I'm hoping that we're looking at what, what those, what those ways are to establish that relationship when it wasn't there before.
Yeah, we, we are, um, Rob and we're working on professional development offerings for our educators to, you know, exactly what you're speaking to, you know, it's a new student that they do not have that face-to-face in-person connection. Um, so we want our educators to be as comfortable and have as many tools in their toolbox to kind of ease that and build those connections. Um, so we, in fact, the meeting I was in prior to this one, we're looking at um, you know, resiliency supports for our teachers and how to help them. Um, and administrators, anyone, all P S D staff, how do you connect with a kid you haven't connected with before in this format? Um, and I, I think another thing to note too is even if a child, you know, the last time a teacher saw that student was March 13th, you know? And so much has changed for that student, for that teacher. And so the relationship that a teacher, an educator may have had with that student in March, um, again, we still need to do that re-establishing. There's a lot of water under the bridge for everybody with that. So.
Thank you. This is Naomi. Uh, this is a good follow-up, I think, to what Rob was saying. I, I'm anticipating just a lot of trauma coming into the schools. And I'm anticipating that trauma manifesting or masking itself as behavioral issues. And we have not determined what the schedule is going to look like, but it really seems like it won't be a typical five-day-a-week schedule for our students. So how are we helping our teachers and providing trauma-informed training and, and assistance in fitting together those pieces as well, I guess is my question. Thank you. That was Naomi.
Ruben, you want me to jump in on this one?
Yes.
Um, again, Naomi, it's a lot of prep work um, ahead of time. And you know, we are a, a district that understands trauma. We're trauma-informed. We're working towards being trauma-responsive to carrying out those practices. Um, and in our, in our work with educators, you know, we're going to start with, let's have this student feel safe first in your classroom so that they can go on to learn. Um, I think acknowledging um, what the community has been through. Um, we've got to give students a chance to um, talk about that in, in, and it's maybe going to be in this format. Um, and working with our teachers around understanding what is trauma, what is behavior? And as Ruben, as you've seen in the slides, um, I think Student Services, we're prepared um, to support our educators in many different ways. But so much of it is, I think, professional development um, to get our, to get our staff up and running.
Great, thank you. Actually, the, the question I have is rather specific. Um, in the gender plan, I know oftentimes we have, um, you know, the, what the teachers would refer to the students, um, their, their preferred name versus their legal name. I've heard um, that sometimes the legal name has been popping up on uh, Zoom calls or um, and I'm just wondering if there's a possibility, are we pulling that from the legal name? And is there a possibility to do it from the preferred name instead? Cause I do know that that has been um, traumatizing for some students.
Yeah, and honestly, that's the first I've heard of that since we've started this. So you know, that's, that's not something that I've encountered yet. Um, the guidance and policy around that gender plan piece has been something that I've been working throughout this year to get more clarity for. So for instance, we have had a number of gender support plan meetings where the student has had the preferred name. Parents are still the legal guardian and they're under 18 and so they're saying absolutely not. Um, it's that in those situations where we're having that difficulty of what is the legal, what's preferred? And then how do we also work with the parents around being that team component? Um, if a parent in the ideal situation, if the parent says, yes, absolutely, I agree to this gender plan and the preferred name, we will immediately will contact our IT department and our synergy support and they will actually change that name in the system so that when they log into anything like Zoom or if there's a substitute pulling up a report, it'll actually have the preferred name there. Um, and so that's that easy piece, but it's more of this component to where um, one, the student says, I don't want my parents to know what my preferred name is. And so we might be able to put in as a nickname, but we still don't have that ability to change it in our system. And so uh, been working with Autumn Aspen around that, um, working with uh, records as well to really get some clear definitions around that. And then one of the things that's been really helpful is uh, there's a collaboration between Case, CASB, um, Chassa that put out around um, gender plans and transgender guidance. That's a good rule of thumb for working with schools. And again, it's more of the rule of thumb and then what is the legal and what is the preferred? Um, and so we're just trying to get some of that grayness out of the system and better support our students, our families and our teachers, um, as well as administrators when that question comes up. So um, you know, if that's a situation like that where we have a planted place and they're still getting, being called inappropriately by their legal name, their preferred name, then I, I definitely would like to be aware of that so we can work with that parent and that student to get that corrected.
I appreciate that.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I'm not sure who would take this one, but uh, will any of this mental health money, um, or any of the mental health problems qualify for the federal money? Um, because of the COVID-19 um, federal money, would any of that mental health expense be covered by that?
So, I'm sorry, do you want to ask both or do you want to ask this one first and then the other?
No, go ahead and ask that one. I'll ask my other one after that.
Okay, um, so I've been looking for guidance around that. Um, when you read the CARES Act, and again, this is something that, you know, I've asked others to look into as well. When you read the CARES Act, part of it says, this is for funding for lost physicians from March until I think November of 2020. So that limits whether or not we could use it for any of these mental health physicians or counselors that are on grants that we're unsure about. Um, the other component is those ESR funds. Um, and I'm sorry, I don't remember what the acronym completely stands for, but it's the E S S E R funds. Those funds may have more flexibility to be used that way, but again, we're still waiting for guidance because um, the state has made suggestions, but there's no guidance around whether or not it's an appropriate use or if it's something we could use. And so, you know, I've forwarded that information on and I think that's part of the discussions going on there. But until more guidance comes out and then also when we have more of the state budget around what is actually indeed going to happen with these grants for counselors, I think that's where we can really do more of the planning. But right now it's more waiting for the state guidance as far as my level of that conversation has occurred.
Okay, and then uh, regarding uh, the kids not having access to all of their counselors or counselors or, or during the summer because of them being um, not funded during the summer. Uh, do we have anything out there like for kids, like a 1-800 number? Or, or do we have something that, that points them towards a resource that can help them out?
So I, I'm happy to share with, I, I can send to Lauren the community resource document that has a lot of those community links and resources available that's shared throughout the system. Um, I believe it's the Bohemian Foundation actually puts that out, excuse me, but it is a collaboration between the school district and other community partners. And so I can send that to Lauren and if she wants to forward that to, or if she could forward that to you, you can get a visual of what that looks like. Um, but it is around that whole community support um, component and what we do in those times where we're not in session to support students. Um, because you know, that, that is a large chunk of time there that students um, don't have typical school resources available to them. Um, so we can definitely get that shared.
Okay, so thank you for sharing that with me, but, but what I really want to understand is, is, is how are we getting out in front of the kids? How are we making sure that's getting in front of the kids? Like?
Carolyn, one thing we did um, as a mental health team is we drafted um, a letter for each level. So elementary, middle and high school, a letter to parents, kind of what to expect. Um, it was about a page and a half. Um, we tried to be real condensed in what we, the information we were providing. Um, some options about, you know, what, what looks like normal, what's to be expected behavior, when to worry. And then there we did list resources as well. Um, our translation department really came through quickly. Um, I asked for a quick turnaround and so all principals have that in English, Arabic and in Spanish to send home to their families as part of their closing um, letter, you know, closing out the school year information. Um, and I know our, our website too, we tried to keep up on resources, um, availability, what's happening over the summer as well.
Was that letter also sent to the students or just to the parents?
The letter went home to the parents. We've asked principals, you know, and at high school, they may send that as well to students, I don't know. Um, but we prepared it um, looking through the parent lens.
Okay, and then so.
So actually, uh, Rob kind of took it about uh, the training aspect and how we're going to make sure all the teachers are getting that, which is important. Uh, I will take this moment though to sincerely thank you guys for being out there and, and working hard on this. Uh, it is greatly appreciated. I know uh, you guys don't have all the resources that you need to reach out and, and uh, get all the kids that we need to make contact with. But I do greatly appreciate the effort and the work that you guys do and your teams. Um, I do, um, I have been listening and, and working a lot with the state budget a little bit. Now just from what I'm hearing, uh, this is, it's not written in stone, but uh, a lot of the uh, counseling positions, they were looking at not growing, but maybe not canceling any of them is what I, I keep hearing. So if it stays like that, that would be great for the grant programs. Um, and so we can hope that that continues.
I might, um, if you don't mind, Rob, I'll just toss in a question here. Um, and this may be for the two of you and/or for, for the rest of the staff. I, I keep wondering as we consider next fall and how concerning it is what's going to happen to, to the kids, the students who are, you know, and some are going to do well, some aren't. The connections, you know, the, the ability for them to learn, these various needs and abilities. Is there any thought to prioritizing who has access to those buildings and teachers in person versus who doesn't? I don't know how we would, you know, I don't know if we're talking about I E Ps and 504s over other people or, you know, as we're, as we're looking at how to use our buildings and social distance, there could be some.
I haven't been involved in that conversation at my level. Um, again, I think the education team that Mel's been involved in might be the group that has been looking at it. And so I, I, you know, obviously um, maybe Mel or Scott or Todd can speak more to those plans. And you know, I know as we're, it's always moving target right now with what's happening around COVID. And so it's trying to be conscious of what, what that plan will look like. And then how do we develop the plan when there is no concrete um, idea as to what we're all going to be doing in a couple of months? And so um, I know that that might be a conversation. It is something that I've experienced in terms of 504 support where I think, you know, obviously parents are, have that concern as well as to how do I ensure my student has um, received what it is that we're doing online? I think that's a concern that the system has expressed as well. And so um, I will let maybe Scott or Melanie and, and speak to that a little bit more directly around those plans.
Kristoff, I think it's a great question and, and it is one that is, is popping up as we talk um, with our leaders, right, is wondering how do they meet the needs of um, some of our different at-risk populations? And so we are looking at creative ways. Um, transportation's a good example of that. Thinking about how might we make sure transportation can, can help and support those who are most at risk? But also how do we allow for students to have more access to teachers face-to-face if that's possible? Um, a lot of that has to do with what our operations are and it was, we'll, we'll uh, continue to work. Some great work done, we'll bring it into this board. I think it's the next time we're together in two weeks, um, around what we're thinking. And that feels like it's in short order to have that ready for, for this group in two weeks. Um, I do think it's important, given many of the questions, right, as we think about the training. Um, those kind of questions that you ask, Kristoff, is yes, I think they're great questions to ask and recognize um, whether stuff's working or whether we're working on those. The answer is yes, we uh, we want to be as, as successful face-to-face as we can. And that's going to require um, training on how do we connect with individuals in different ways? How do we make sure connections is part of all the training that we do? And that's not just uh, Mel's and Wenzel's responsibility, that's the team's responsibility. And, and that involves all of those things may, may turn out to be interventions for, for students that may need a little more face-to-face or a little more in-person time. And uh, how do we, how can we accommodate that and can we accommodate that? And those are things we're going to have to answer in two and a half months.
Thanks. I think that that um, is a perfect example of why we believe it's so important to have some time face-to-face with kids. Um, especially when we haven't met them yet and it's a new group of kids to earlier comments that were made tonight. Um, teachers want to be able to get to know the kids and that's generally speaking, how the referral process happens is through interactions with the, the caring adult who then says, I think this kid needs some support and does the referral. And so we are concerned that the referral process doesn't work the same online it does. But it, but um, I, I anticipate that once the kids and teachers actually get to know each other a little bit, that referrals will, will go up. Todd, you were going to add something?
Yeah, I would just add that keep in mind that this work doesn't have a beginning and an end. Our teachers, as they travel into the spring, Sarah a, a, on the integrated services side, uh, Ruben and assistant principals and principals on the 504 side are keeping an inventory, if you will, of how the year ended up, where things are going. They're paying close attention to how kids travel through the summer. So I see us engaging in a lot of anticipatory work, uh, knowing where we're going to have some hotspots. We know where there are referrals in progress. We know where there are special connections that need to be made. And I look for our teachers as we get into early August um, and start prepping for whatever we face uh, at the end of August, they'll start making arrangements, making early connections, making contacts if they haven't already done so throughout the summer. Probably the most risky areas we have for those uh, to be challenges are the transitions from fifth to sixth, from eighth to ninth. You're likely to have those uh, pop up there if you're not paying close attention. If it's traveling within the same school, I think we're generally as, as well-prepared as we can be. We do a number of transition activities and events to pay close attention. And kids that are, kids that are in those situations are definitely on the radar of school staffs.
Yeah, we've talked quite a lot about PD being important here. Um, I guess the question I have is. I have is how much of the training that we've talked about is going to be mandatory? Right? I know we talked about, yeah, that's the question. You know, we've certainly had trainings, all kinds of trainings available for teachers in various circumstances to learn various things. As I understand it, most of them are at the discretion of the teacher. And I'm wondering whether this kind of remote training stuff, connection establishment techniques is going to be mandatory or it's going to be up to the teacher to decide whether he or she wishes to participate in such a thing.
Rob, I think it's a good question and it's always a challenge, right, when you require anything because it requires money to do that. But we are looking creatively at what our options are, to have optional training that happens, plan on the, in the system, I think we talked about it before, to do some just-in-time trainings early in August. We also have started conversations about how do we have some more required training? And as we hash out the details for that, I think we'll be able to share that.
Yes, thank you. This is Naomi. So I guess I, this is really hard for me because I know that we are expecting students who are returning to their same homeschools that the teachers are going to know who they are. So they'll probably be able to pick up more on the trauma that they're seeing in their kids. You know, I have kids in this system and this has been a really very bad experience for them. And some of the things that are going to continue are, my little incoming second grader is so sad about masks. It doesn't bother her wearing it. It bothers her that she can't see other people smiling at her. And I recognize that that's a product of the COVIDs and that we can't just say, oh, it makes Cecily Johnson sad to wear, not see smiles, so we're not going to do that. But that's something that we're going to encounter and I'm pretty sure not just with my own, you know, my own child. You know, I remember, I noticed that Heather Easterling touched every kid who walked into her classroom. And I know that for some of those kids, that is the only positive touch that they got the whole day. That's gone now. We don't have that option for connection anymore. And it's going to be really hard to re-establish those connections without facial expressions or physical touch, which are two of the things that I think that we rely on quite a bit. So I also have the same concerns that Rob just shared, that we're, you know, we're trying to respond to these new traumas with our students, but we can't use the skills, I say we, the teachers and paraprofessionals and staff can't use the skills, a lot of the skills that they would previously draw on because of the nature of this particular issue. And so I'm really concerned that we need to make sure that there is adequate training for what to do to connect and support our little learners and our big learners when we cannot do things like smile at them and give them a pat on the back. Thank you. That was Naomi.
No, I think it's being heard in the system. You know, I'm in an email stream currently with our school counselors around how do they do that interaction? How do they do that, you know, absent a hug, absent, you know, what you would typically see? How do I help the student one express whether or not they're sad, they're emotional, they need that contact, those components? And so there's some creative conversations happening. And this is mostly the counseling level, but, you know, how do we connect to our students and what are some of the strategies they're using? So that's the conversation that's happening and I think it's happening throughout the system. So, you know, I think it's a concern because many educators go into this business because, one, they love being around students, they love being around other adults, and there is that connection to their students. And so how do we re-establish those in this very interesting time that we're in right now? And I think that's something that, you know, whether explaining on